Ms. Tiff?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Been reading about the hands thing, by the way. I just realized that collectively, we overlooked some nomenclature. Six-six-seventeen says, uh, the allowed animals as non-poisonous reptiles and non-poisonous amphibians.
Well, that was from 2019.
If we have to crack that open.
Probably.
And the non-poisonous same percent.
It's probably the twenty percent.
Probably could stand, but the non-venomous reptiles.
Says can be, oh, minus. So we just gotta explain that.
Also, I want to be able to keep a raccoon as a pet.
Slide that in there.
I said, or they're all, they're all beautiful chickens.
No, that was the lady goes, hey, I use my chickens to feed my family, and then my granddaughter uses her three for food, and she's autistic. So I go, I'll ask council if they'll change the ordinance. That's an easy ask. But it'll be a procedure, I told her. I go, they can't change it, I don't think, tonight, but they can say that, bring it back with.
Bring your earrings.
Data.
They look pretty on you.
Yeah.
Make those hundred cat things.
Yeah.
Oh, hey. Hey, I'm glad you used them. We've always had those.
They just appeared in my basket. They've been gone for a while.
What was that?
Well, I haven't been.
Oh, your laser pointer?
I'm gonna play with it.
All right.
Ready? You ready? Okay.
All right. Call the meeting to order, Tiffany. Please take the role.
Councilwoman Garvey.
Present.
Councilwoman Rurkala.
Present.
Councilman Brennan.
Present.
Councilman Hurdle.
Present.
Mayor Sykes.
Present. Let the record reflect that we do have a call for Tuesday, May twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-five. We'll run down to recognizing persons in the audience. Not for the public hearing. This is just recognize somebody who wants to get up and speak really quick. I'm not gonna need this. I'm not gonna be here that long.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, city staff, present. I'm Decker Sanders. I've lived here in Mountain Home since nineteen eighty-eight. And my purpose for coming before you this evening is to maintain my own sense of personal integrity. When last I spoke with you at your last meeting, I made a comment to a public records request that I believe I did send a message on that was gonna take the maximum amount of time to produce. On further reflection, at my computer at home, I find it's still in draft mode. So there's no evidence the city ever received the request. And to the extent that I caused any confusion or angst amongst you or your staff, I sincerely apologize. Thank you.
Thank you, Decker.
Thank you, Decker.
Okay. Rod Dudley. And I'm gonna try to make this make sense. Most of you, mayor, council, thanks for giving me time to talk. I'd sent an email to all four of you and the mayor, and there was no response. So I wanted to make it a public record with me actually saying what I said. And I'm gonna do this in two parts. One was, I made a post on Moho Watchdog, and, um, there were comments there, but not by anybody, any of you, and I understand that. But I'll start out with what the email that was sent to you, and then I'll, um, go a little bit further as to the video I made and explain it. Elected officials using Rod and Allen's name. I ask that you cease and desist Mayor Richard Sykes of Mountain Home, Idaho. I am writing to point out the mayor of Mountain Home, Idaho, Richard Sykes, has violated private citizens' rights to request public records from City Hall by using intimidation and attempting to humiliate Allen and I by pointing out the number of requests made and implying they were wasting citizens' tax dollars. We are writing to inform Mayor Richard Sykes to cease and desist using our names in any public media for any reason with or without cause or permission. To attempt to humiliate, to humiliate myself and Allen using city and public video equipment and Facebook City Page, YouTube, is unacceptable. We are not elected officials, per the First Amendment, right to speak our opinions and stating facts shown by public records, i.e. the Freedom of the Press Act that allows for voicing and publishing statements, and per the Freedom of Information Act, public requests, which grants citizens the right to request access to government information. Allen and I are also asking for a public and written apology for Mayor Sykes' statements using our names. And then I ask that you do that within forty-eight hours. This was last Wednesday, or we may take it further. And then the following video, and I put the attachment to the video. Dang. Do I get to go on, or are you gonna cut me off?
I'm gonna cut you off.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else? I can hear what he's saying.
This is public comment.
Yes, Don.
Open public comment.
Except for if it's, has to do with the, we have a public hearing on here.
Is it, does this apply, is this to the public hearing?
To this, yeah.
No, if it's in regards to the public hearing on the fiber optic, you cannot discuss it at this time. Any other.
No, because that's a public hearing that's next.
I'm deaf. I couldn't hear. Sorry. Okay. All right. We're gonna run down to, uh, public hearing. Uh, please limit comments to max for three minutes, uh, number one, and then Tiff will give the, kind of the details of how the public hearing works.
Yes. So, public hearing, no duplicate testimonies, no yelling or rude behavior, no personal attacks, three-minute time limit on each person, and you cannot give your time to anyone else. So, before we go, though, we had three that were mailed in that I will read aloud, so that the record reflects them, and then we'll open it up to the floor. Then I have my cheaters on for one. Okay. It says, I, Brian P. Bethel, of two-two-three-zero, north fifty east of Mountain Home, Idaho, object to the three thousand two hundred forty-seven dollars, eighteen cent assessment or increase in assessment amount. To whom it may concern, I object to the increase in price of the assessment roll for the fiber optic local improvement district, number one, K. Troy Stevens. Here's the cheater. Okay.
You used to make fun of me.
I know, I did, sorry. Objection to property reassessment. I'm writing to express an objection to the reassessment of my property as a result of installation of Mountain Home Fiber Optic Network. The Mountain Home Fiber Optic was marketed as a good value for residents with the promise of excellent service. I recall a statement saying the possession of fiber would increase the value of our homes. However, nowhere did it say that we would immediately be reassessed and our property taxes raised up to twenty percent. The average percentage of fiber added to the home is approximately three to five percent, and that is going to average, is going, the average rate for cities across the country. The highest residential assessment value, according to Gronk, is seven percent. That is a far cry from the exuberant amount of twenty percent, which actually shouldn't even be dependent upon the value of residential property in the first place. As fiber internet in this is the same, whether your house costs a hundred thousand or a million, I want to know the documentation and reasoning behind the extreme percentage because so far, nothing supports the outrageous idea of our property taxes should go up twenty percent over a mere existence of fiber internet. There has been a serious lack of information, documentation, or public availability of information in general about anything that goes on in this city. The most, and most importantly, that goes on with the fiber project. I object to the raise in taxes, as that makes the cost of Mountain Home Fiber much more expensive than originally stated. There is neither evidence nor reason as to why this would raise my home's value much at all, and certainly not twenty percent. As fiber and now Starlink become increasingly more common and more affordable, the idea that either form of internet raises your home twenty percent is absolutely insane and unfounded. For many, including myself, who have a fixed income and have taxes raised along with paying off the original cost of the installation, this will be an unexpected expense. I feel like this is extortion for something that many, if not all, residents opted into in good faith. There was rumors that, due to poor management and lack of adequate funding of the project, the project itself went bankrupt. Please correct me if I'm wrong. I do not feel that I, nor any other resident in Mountain Home, should have to pay the price in order to accommodate a project that may have been an overall poorly planned fiasco. Barbara Johnson at six-seventy north, or southwest Hubert. And that's all I got.
Okay. All right. Who wants to come up first?
Oh, yes, I just, I, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. No, no, no. Well, I didn't, I didn't sort of have a thing, but I was told I needed to bring, um, in a pri, in a public forum, all the stuff that was damaged on my property. So.
Signing it and state your name.
Sure. I'm Liberty Trash, and I live at two-twenty east fifteenth north. And my front property was damaged, my yard, my sprinklers, right, my curbing. And there is one section next to my house that I believe is part of the city, but just to let you know that that entire cement slab is sunk, and you got like a three or four inch tripping hazard, so that that just needs to be fixed and brought to your attention, so. I just, I heard on the YouTube or, um, Facebook post that I needed to bring that up in a public forum, so I don't know if there's anything else you need, or.
If you, Liberty, you'll put your name and your address on there for us.
I will.
And if you, you put your phone number, I'll follow up with you.
Okay, thank you.
Don. Oh.
My name is Don Guest. Part of Westside Shore District, which doesn't have as much to do with some of this as what other people do, but anyway, I'm addressing this to everybody, and Mr. Mayor Sykes here. I've been kind of following this fiber optics myself a little bit here and there. I have pictures on my phone down there on Bradford. If I can touch, that new line was put in. At the top of it, and to my wrist. If I go down there and decide to do what I want to do on that street, start digging, and I tear up that line, you guys are gonna have to fix it. And I ain't paying for it. Because it ain't two foot deep or eighteen inches, it ain't the code. There's a lot of other places around. You come down Fifth, that road. They hip hop down through there. I noticed out there the other day, they were re-jump slicing down the Boise side, the north side of the road. There's still a pile of concrete out there by the driveway at the old Bennett Ranch House. And I hollered out the window the other day going by there, the guy. I said, you gonna pick that stuff up? It's been there over years since they paved that road darn near. And I walked from over off of where I live, took and walked from down off of that, around by the down hasket and made the loop, come around on Fifth. There's a manhole, or not a manhole, but a water main cap part of it, throw it in the yard up there, chunks of asphalt. You get down there by Ash Street. None of that stuff was in there when that was paved before, I don't think. You get down there on Ash, there's a fire hydrant there. That asphalt wasn't laying there when you guys paved, I don't think. Neither was that concrete. At least have some dignity. Whoever's doing it, whether it's you guys or whoever's putting that stuff in, should be cleaning that stuff up. I wouldn't leave it there. I mean, I'd leave it there until I had a chance, but that's been, since that road's been paved, I hate to say it. Mentioned it a couple of times to a sup, a couple of people out there, and, oh, well, we'll get it, but. But I, I just don't see how you guys can bury that fiber and get away with it if it gets hit. And we shut down, if it happens to be a, a real technical one, and we shut down half the town or something, or even your guys' communication stuff, anything. It's gonna cost whatever, you know, you guys put it in, and it's gonna be expensive. Plus, I had a nice talk with the, sorry, I had a nice talk real quick with the CentriLink, and he said it got hit lots of times out there. Thank you.
Okay. I never have done this before, so, thank you for the time. My name is Ron Merriman. We're at seven-sixty Southwest MB Street. I'm confused. I will say, loving the cable to fiber optic, love it. Looks like it was installed good. The only thing is, I'm hearing something about house taxes when we went into this. I think the original letter, and I think I have a copy, it was gonna be either thirty-two-fifty or thirty-four-fifty, which... Then, of course, the more people that put in, the price was gonna possibly go down. I just need to know how much it's gonna cost. We wanna pay for it. We don't need our house reassessed. Give me the dollar figures. That's all, because it's kind of confusing. This is the first time at this meeting that we heard. Other than that, cables excellent, love it. Give us a dollar figure.
So really quick, uh, just for everyone's clarification, it's, it's, the assessment is the cost to put in the, uh, the fiber and the cable, everything, divided amongst everybody that chose to take it. It doesn't raise your taxes. It doesn't have anything to do with taxes, and now that, that we looked at it, we probably could have had our attorney word it a little bit differently, not you. It said assessment roll, but it was the assessment roll of the project, not your homes. So I want everyone to know that, um, the, the twenty percent is, is state code, you put it in there. So let's say you had, we, we have three hundred and sixty people, I'm just saying three sixty for number. And sixty of them go, you know what, I don't want it now. Well, then, the assessment has the value, the, the, the twenty percent buffer, that if it went up, because those sixty people, because you divided that off, right? But we're not seeing anybody jump off. We're, 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 we're actually, we went really fiscally conservative on the number, so thirty-two.
Forty-seven, eighteen.
Yes. We, we plan it to go down. So I guess you, actually, you'll, you'll explain it a lot better than I will. Tiff's the, the, the godfather of this.
I'm not the godfather.
You have to use this, please.
I, yeah, I don't think I can. So the state statute allows the council, the discretion, to go up to a threshold of twenty percent in the total project cost, okay? That's what the state statute difference is. After, if it were to increase twenty percent, then it would have to come back before the body in another public hearing forum, which we would then be, have to notify everybody again in the district that it went over the twenty percent threshold. Our intention, and we focus diligently, the mayor, the council, city staff, is to keep that as low as possible. And we've actually done really more conservatively to anticipate an interest rate to be higher than what market is reflecting today, if, going out to bond. So with all that in mind, if we get a really, please cross your fingers that interest rates drop, it will be phenomenal for you all. You'll see that number decrease, um, as we get into the financing portion. So. You, if you want to comment, you have to come up here and comment. Unfortunately, I'm just hoping maybe I answer some of your questions. The amount should have been on a sticker at the bottom of your notices. That's the assessment that everyone will be billed to pay, essentially.
Did you not get one at the bottom? The sticker didn't say thirty, thirty-two, forty-seven, eighteen?
I do. What was the address?
Seven-sixty.
Southwest MB.
Seven-sixty MB. I have these, like, six that I keep coming back to me. I don't, unfortunately.
We'll get you one.
Hi, my name is Rema Chris Perry, and I live at seven-forty Southwest Foley Street, Mayor Sykes. I just had a question. I don't have a comment. I was wondering, when more people move into the area, there's all kinds of development out there, is that gonna lower that assessment? It probably isn't. Okay, that's all I wanted to ask.
That my facial expression gave me, and, and.
Mayor.
Go ahead.
Again, you, unfortunately, the people who opted in, unfortunately, fortunately, right, like, what, however you look at this. You guys opting in, you did the heavy lifting to bring the services within your neighborhoods. You're paying for that infrastructure and your home connections. The people who move in after, they can connect, but they're gonna have to pay what our ordinance fees are by foot to get to their home. So they're gonna pay potentially, depending how far they are from a connection point, they would pay more than you guys paid today.
So in ordinance, right now, it states that it's thirty-six hundred dollars.
Right.
You have to pay that upfront, and then if it's over a hundred feet, you'd pay for the extra feet. So you guys are getting a better deal than, like, if I moved in right next to, to you guys and didn't have it.
So is this the amount only?
Is this what we're gonna pay now?
That's the question.
So, so the problem is, is we can't pay it right now, because we have to do a, uh, we have to do the ordinance, we have to do the public hearing, and then what do we have to do, one more?
No, the, the only way there'll be another public hearing is if it were to increase above twenty percent. Right now, we're anticipating that to be the cost that you would pay at final assessment, which we're not there yet until probably July. We cannot accept any more, we can't accept any funds, because there's several state statutes, like, we have to follow the code by the state to the T. So like, we have to do the public hearing today to hear everybody's testimony, then we have to come back, we have to do an ordinance adoption, then we have to put it out to the market. So there's several other things that occur. So if you want to keep tuned, please come to the next several months of city council meetings.
All right. So we wanted to get some of those questions, you know, and answer for you, but come on down.
My name is Catherine Newcomb. So, okay, so, uh, as I understand it, it's gonna be thirty-two something or other for those of us in this, uh, district who opted in, which we did. We love our fiber connection. We're loving it. I'm just curious as to, like, how the, like, costs, you know, like, operating costs were going to be handled, like, in, you know, going forward.
So currently, your O and M will stay the same. That's your seventeen fifty you currently pay. You will contract with your ISP provider currently, and then if you choose to pay it off, once we close this LED and you choose to pay it off, you can do a one lump sum payment, or we'll allow you to amortize it over, uh, was it ten years? I think it was ten years.
Okay.
And so we could do one of two different ways. Correct me if I'm wrong, Paul, on this, and you could pay it quarterly, no, every six months, or once a year?
We'll be, we'll be told at that point.
Yeah, yeah, you'll, yeah, more to follow on that payment.
Okay. An annual assessment.
So is, is there, like, some, some other kind of, um, costs that we would be paying, like, for maintaining the lines or whatever?
That's the seventeen fifty, the O and M.
Oh, okay.
You should already have that on your utility bill today.
Yes, we do. So that's, that's what that is.
Yeah.
And then the, um, the other, uh, will be whatever option we chose for the upfront fee.
Yep.
Okay?
So the O and M pays for, someone comes out, cuts your line, your VVG breaks, uh, you just need us to come out there and, and check your stuff, that kind of stuff.
Okay.
Yep.
And we'll, and so then when we, if we decide to pay in installments, uh, for our, you know, for our installment costs, will, will that come up on our utility bill or somewhere else? That'll be separate?
Yeah, so similar to how you pay your county taxes are sent, we'll send an annual assessment that will show you what the total amount is due for that annual payment.
Okay.
And if you would like, we will allow for monthly payments to come within the city hall, but you would have to initiate that.
Oh, okay.
It won't go on your, your utility bill monthly.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Yep. Come on.
I just had a quick comment. Do I, do I still need to put my name down?
Yes, please.
A second. Sorry, try to be quick here, guys. I can't, uh, talk and write at the same time, so. Yeah. Okay. Uh, my name is Rex Hunsaker. I live at nineteen sixty-five North Six East, and I just wanted to thank you guys for the fiber. Night and day compared to the service I had before. I work a lot out of my home. I have a business office. I'm on WebEx calls a lot, multiple computers going, multiple monitors, lots of audio, uh, and video media going at the same time, and I, I can't thank you guys enough. I have one gig in the house. It's smoking fast. I, I haven't had one downtime issue since you guys put it in, and compared to the one-point-five MVPS speed I had with CentriLink, I couldn't even function my business out of the house, so I just gotta tell you, great job. They did a great job putting it in. I had no issues with the install. The guys were great, and, uh, just want to thank you.
Hey, Tiff, um, the, the next process for the, us acquiring the bank loan or the, the the bond, we kind of walk them through that really quick for our next process after this. So we, we, we used our ARPA funds for the, the initial LED one, and so to recoup our funding back, we need to, we were working with Cool.
Clearwater.
Clearwater Financial, and there are, uh, investment gurus that are gonna go out there and place this bond out into the, into the world. So that's what we're talking about, trying to get the best rate out there. Did I miss something?
Nope. Yes.
Did I miss something, councilman?
They also have a list of all of the banks and credit unions in town, so they'll get notified also.
To keep it local.
Yes.
Yep. We get, we gave them, all of them, actually, didn't we?
Yes, we covered everything. And asked them to please submit the packet to the banks.
Anything to answer that for you, councilman? Okay.
They also talked about bundling with other state bonds at the state level if needed as well. So we have a lot of network availability as far as Clearwater has.
Next. Want somebody to lead it up? Come on.
Uh, my name is Gary Ashby. I actually came before this council when you guys were getting ready to do the LED and just begged you guys to do it, and I thought I'd be pretty ungrateful if I didn't come back and tell you, thank you, thank you very much. It's been, under my perception, and I know we all have different perceptions, it's been one of the best things that could have ever happened to our city, and I know from a very personal perspective, I came here and told. And I know from a very personal perspective, I came here and told you I was having so much trouble with my internet provider, which we don't have to keep naming, I think we got into a lot of names. It was so bad that I was going to be required to relocate to a bigger city, and I desperately did not wanna leave. And because of this fiber, I didn't have a single outage the whole, I retired this year. At the beginning of this year, I started my retirement, but up until then, I've had it for about three years now. I had two years of perfect service while I worked, and it saved my job. So, you know, there's gonna be a lot of different comments and a lot of different things that happen, but I will tell you that that team who worked on the fiber for me and for the people I saw were exceptional. It's worked perfectly. They've been professional. They've been easy to work with. I appreciate the council sticking their necks out a little bit. I know everyone was a little bit hesitant. The mayor was great in working with it. I, I actually bugged him to keep it going, keep it going, we gotta have it. And as a result of that, I, I think we've really got a big winner on our hands. One other thing I just wanna mention, I worked enough with different governments on local improvement projects and stuff, or been involved in them, I think we all have. And I came from the Seattle area, and I'll tell you, when the government tells you it's gonna cost a certain amount, you triple the amount in your budget and you plan on it being way higher. I did that in this one because I didn't know any better. It came in under what you guys were representing, and I have extra money now because I've saved up for it. So, I mean, there's just, everything about this to me has been exceptional, so I just feel like I needed to tell you guys that before I let this go by. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Gary.
I also can't write and talk at the same time.
Public hearing closed. Councilman Brennan?
I just wanna say, I, I appreciate everybody actually giving us feedback too. Aside from the legalities of closing out the LED and formalizing that process, thanks for coming forward and telling us how you feel about it, 'cause aside from hearing from city staff, which I trust wholeheartedly, but it's also good to hear your perspective on it too, good, bad, or indifferent, so thanks for coming forward.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna run down to conflict of interest. Declaration, has any council member received information pertaining to or otherwise had any contact with any person regarding any items on this city council agenda? If so, please set forth the nature of contact. All right, hearing none. We're gonna run down to the consent agenda. Council A through G. Is there anything you want pulled, maybe discussed a little bit further in depth? Were you copacetic with all the minutes?
Mayor.
Councilwoman Wurkla?
On F, is Shasta here, or someone can speak for her? I wanna know what the exact plans are for this grant. It doesn't state clearly.
Mayor.
Councilman Harjo?
I might be able to speak this much. Not for Shasta, but this is one that Shasta and I stumbled upon together. T-Mobile is doing these grants all across the country to offer like enhanced connectivity to technology in schools or libraries or places like that, nonprofits especially. So what Shasta has in mind for this, I can't speak to, but the intent of the grant is focused at, at like children, education, libraries, that sort of thing.
Mayor.
Sorry, Councilwoman Wurkla?
So, yeah, thank you. And yeah, so I went on their website, the T-Mobile website, and I looked up and it just verbatim what the project summary is off here is taken from the website. So I was just curious what she plans for her department specifically. Does anyone, city staff know?
Do you know?
I have the same information.
Okay. We can get, we can get that back to you. When does it have to be put in?
I don't know what has to be submitted, Mayor, but it does say, I think until 2026.
Councilman Harjo? All right. The money that T-Mobile is allocating across this, like goes in like chunks by, by portions of the calendar, and this application period ends June 30th, so.
What's that say?
You can probably get that specific info back in terms of, in terms of the budget. Obviously, with all grants coming into the city, those, those grants have to be accounted for whether you win them or not, kinda thing, so I would anticipate if she was awarded, or if the library was awarded those funds, that they would have some really specific use at that point. I think this is trying to get out ahead of it.
Mayor.
Councilwoman Wurkla?
Do you plan on bringing department heads back to city council meetings, so when we have these questions, they can answer them?
Yeah, usually, council member, or department heads will usually hear if they have something on the agenda, so, and usually Shasta's here. She's not here today, but, yeah, yeah, usually they, they come if they have something on the agenda.
All right, council, any other questions A through G? Councilman Brennan?
Make a motion to pass the consent agenda as printed.
Second? It's been motioned, motioned and seconded. Any further questions or comment, communication, sorry? Hearing none, I'll call up the question. Councilwoman Garvey?
Aye.
Councilman Brennan?
Aye.
Councilwoman Wurkla?
Aye.
Councilman Harjo?
Aye.
Run down to old business action deliberation dispatch agreement with Elmore County requested by Councilwoman Wurkla during the meeting, 5/13/2025.
Yeah, so I'm gonna give a timeline here. This is the facts as I know of them, so if I say something incorrect, please correct me. So this, so number one, the city did not pay the non-emergency dispatch bill on time for the cooperative agreement with the county. Once city council heard payment wasn't submitted, council immediately voted unanimously to submit payment. Council president organized a meeting between the county commissioners and council. Number four, at that meeting, I asked the county commissioners directly, what will it take to get them to revisit the cooperative agreement between county and city dated September 20th, 2024? The county commissioner said for us, the city, to revisit the animal shelter MOU. Thanks to Councilwoman Garvey and Councilman Harjo, they quickly put together an MOU agreement where all parties eventually agreed to and signed between the city and the county. So today, we are at the next step to revisit the cooperative agreement to the county and see what their response will be. So Tiffany, it looks like she provided the, the original one that they signed back in September, county and city. I would like to ask council if there's anything in here specifically they would like to omit change or keep the same, but my goal is to get this back in the county's hands to see what their response will be, since we did, I feel like, met in the middle with the animal shelter MOU, and they signed off on it.
Counsel, what do you wanna do? Councilman Brennan?
I understand Tiffany, you put some time into this. I think you mentioned with somebody else, I forgot who, with some possible revisions.
Yeah. Sorry, you wanna take it? Go ahead, Tiff.
Yeah, um, between previous Chief Thompson, Lieutenant Larson, Amy, myself, and Councilman Harjo, and the mayor have, but we've made, like I have just yellow highlights in my draft version to that agreement that I would like added that aren't currently even a portion of that. And that's just on the clerk, like the clerk side of things. I know Amy has specific things she would like added and removed as well, so there's a lot of internal staff edits that we would like added to a new version, if that's what you guys would like to do.
Councilman Brennan?
Tiffany, there's a lot of names that have been helping with that, and you, your highlighted is just your thoughts, it's not the team's thoughts, is that right?
I don't, Councilman Brennan, I don't believe I've captured all of Amy's. This, this was the latest one that we've shared through, what is the Microsoft link that everyone can edit that I printed, but I don't know if that is Amy's, like, and I didn't. Cause as council, when I asked, at the conclusion of the last meeting when Councilwoman Wurkla requested it, I was like, well, what agreement? And she said, just bring forth the old one. So then I didn't wanna confuse matters, I brought the old one forward for the discussion topic tonight. Glad we, we as staff can compile all of our stuff and get it back to you in the first meeting in June. That will not be a problem, because I believe we have them pretty much ready to roll, and we could definitely do that if that's the mission of the council.
That was my thought, to, to present us with the collective requests for change, and then give us a little bit to mull those over, and, and then maybe we'll be ready to submit for their approval meeting.
Mayor.
Councilwoman Wurkla?
No, that sounds good. It's just, last meeting, when I asked for it, you said which copy? I'm like, I don't know, I thought there was only one, 'cause I don't know what your inner workings were. And so then when we requested updates, every, or I guess that was your request, right? Updates on where's the dispatch agreement at every meeting, it was, we would get a memorandum saying we're working on it, right? And so, I, I mean, what does that mean? So...
So, in fairness, just if staff level, we were thrown a lot of things, like we were, Councilwoman Garvey specifically asked us to get details on what a dispatch center would look like at a staff level, which we did some of that work in lifting. So like we've, we've compiled quite a bit of data, right?
Yeah.
And now we've had an exiting chief too, and I, and I realized like the animal shelter MOU just kinda got signed by the county and things are rolling, so absolutely, like we can get you this. I think these are only my notes, but you, mine are to Melissa and Invoice, so we don't ever get in this situation again.
Sure.
LT, we, and correct me if I'm, can you come here with, please, sorry, but we had talked about dollar figures, time lengths, what else, Councilman Harjo?
One's eyelets.
Eyelets. If they went over, we would pay the difference, kinda thing.
The following year, we would cover, so if eyelets went up like an additional $2,000, the following year, we would add that in to the bill, to the county.
And then due to the new software coming in December, the eyelets bill should go down. So we, we put a, and correct me if I'm wrong, Councilman Harjo, we put in there that if eyelets went over, we would pay for that, but if it went down? Mayor. Councilman.
Yes, that was, that was the, that was the focus of that portion of the conversation, was that projecting the, projecting on the basis of increase that we've known in cost, and Amy had a lot of, had a lot of good information, Ty had a lot of good, sorry, Lieutenant Larson, had a lot of great information on the historical of these things. But as you spoke, the, with, with new technology coming forward, we can anticipate on our side of the fence that the eyelets costs are gonna go down, just through process and procedure, utilizing that new system. So there's some influx around that portion of the conversation. However, the, the, the structure of the concept is if the cost shall increase beyond what we project, that we would do a catch-up payment on that at the next yearly cycle.
Which, maybe Councilwoman Wurkla, impacts paragraph 13, where they just bundled everything together? They agree, the, the cost of service plus the eyelets is all bundled into one amount. We would then, we're trying to break those all out into specific paragraphs of, here's eyelets, what we're willing to pay with the language of if it's overage, we supplied information, we would gladly pay that, right? And then what the service level is in the next paragraph. So those are some of the things we are trying to clean up internally on our side to make sure it's clean for both parties.
And I want citizens to know, this is not the nine, like you call 911, it's emergency, that's not this portion of the agreement. It, this is the non-emergency stuff that we're talking about, per state code, and correct me if I'm wrong there, Paul, that counties are supposed to, 'cause we all pay taxes for dispatch, counties are supposed to do sheriff, dispatch, 911. This is just non-emergency calls, I'm trying to think of a non-emergency, like a bin check or...
My cat's in the tree.
That might be an emergency to a little lady.
Okay.
My wife would go crazy if her cat in a tree.
I need you here right now.
Exactly, yeah. You know, I'd set him up on that one. So I just want the citizens to know, this is for the, the non-emergency portion, so if you call 911, they're, someone's gonna pick up. So.
Councilman Harjo? Question for staff, if we were to bring this back at the first meeting in June, does that give staff enough time to maneuver?
Yeah. Like I have, I haven't, I'm good with hers.
I reviewed it, you know, today, and I felt pretty comfortable.
Okay. Amy is comfortable with hers, right?
Yes.
Okay. So yeah, we can bring it back. Is that cool? And then you guys can look at it and like it. Councilwoman Garvey?
So, a couple quick questions to piggyback on this. It's not, it's my understanding is the county is not withholding this based on the dollar amounts, right? So it, it's, it's the impact fee discussion, and I'm not trying to, to change it to a different topic, however, they, the two go hand in hand. So what I guess would be helpful for us is we get the, or the MOU with the sheriff's radio, sorry, my brain is going a million miles an hour, the dispatch agreement, but then we also have a pretty definite update on the impact fees, because I know that's exactly what they're going to say.
Councilwoman Wurkla? Did you read the minutes from the committee? You're trying to stall, cause the county...
Yeah, I, I, I did get that, but I just kinda wanna make sure that the county knows we know, so we don't have any miscommunication, because we're gonna be over here diligently working on the dispatch agreement, and it could be thrown by the wayside again, so I guess that's a request.
Okay.
If you'd like to let the citizens know that this was a two-year agreement, it's good until, I don't know the exact date, but I gotta find it right here.
September of 2026.
September of 2026, is that what it is?
It was dated September 20th of 2024, so September of 2026.
I just didn't want all your, my viewers to...
Mayor. Councilman Harjo?
I'll make a motion to table this to the first meeting in June.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Any further discussion?
Mayor, a question.
Yes, sir.
Um, any, I don't know who I'm addressing it to, maybe Paul, maybe Lieutenant Larson, I'm not sure. At some, at some point before submitting it for potential signatures from the commissioners, could somebody engage with the, the sheriff of like where we're at? Like, this is what we like and we wanna submit it, but would that save any time if we gave him a heads up and said, is there, is there a deal killer in this for you, potentially? I don't know.
Yeah, I, I talked to him Friday, was it mayor for the day? Friday, and he was like, yeah, let's make a meeting. So we're gonna try to make a meeting this week.
Okay.
And then I can send that out as well.
So if I'm hearing you right, you're, you're willing to discuss like maybe the draft that comes in with him and find any deal killers to potentially save time?
You bet.
And then, I, I don't know, at least let us know if he's good or not good and why he wouldn't be good?
Okay.
And then before we send it?
Okay.
To commissioners for their thoughts.
Okay. Yeah. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call up the question. Councilman Harjo?
Aye.
Councilwoman Wurkla?
Aye.
Councilman Brennan?
Aye.
Councilwoman Garvey?
Aye.
Run down to new business, items removed from the consent agenda, there weren't on. Run down to new business number two, action item deliberation decision regarding 305 Bradford. Oh my gosh, parcel ID number, RPA 0062000051B, property owner owned by Helen Gonzalez. Counsel, what do you wanna do? Counsel, what do you want to do?
Mayor.
Councilman Hardjo.
In, I have the opposite problem Tiff. I can't see with my glasses on today. We received as counsel a, a, a pretty in-depth memorandum from staff regarding, um, this parcel, what affects it in terms of the need for curb gutter sidewalk, the, uh, the surveying of the, of the parcel and how, um, perhaps, um, miscalculations of property line that happened sometime several decades ago. And in this, in this memo, there's one passage that really stands out. That I'll quote, uh, obviously this being a unique case. To sum this up, in exchange for, for the city obtaining, um, the roadway portion of the parcel, Ms. Gonzalez is, uh, willing to exchange the roadway parcel for the installation of curb gutter sidewalk and paving of the roadway. And along with those costs, the parcel to be surveyed. I think in this case, while it is, it is a unique scenario that we don't often get faced with in land use, but also with public right of way. Ms. Gonzalez has been very amenable to, with city staff on working together to find some sort of solution. I take that portion of the passage as, uh, an immense measure of good faith. And I would love to hear from the rest of the council on what, if any amendment to that plan there might be. Otherwise, um, I'm prepared to move forward on that.
Mayor.
Councilwoman Workla.
Ms. Brenda here.
Brenda is unable to attend this evening.
Okay. All right. Brenda, if you watch this later, um, thank you so much for such an in-depth memo. I mean, she did a play-by-play and it was amazing. So thank you, Brenda. Hi. So I did look up on Google Maps what it looks like. And okay, so a mother with two kids who actually went on walks every day with strollers. A situation like that where the sidewalk would just stop and I have to go into the street was very frustrating, right? And so I guess what I'm gathering here from the memo from Brenda is that you're willing to pay for the surveying costs to.
From what I understand, from what Brenda and I talked about was that the city would pay for all of that.
Oh, so this is willing to exchange the roadway parcel for the installation of the curb gutter sidewalk and paving of the roadway, along with the cost to have the parcels surveyed. Okay. So that section would be given to the city? And then, okay, gotcha. So you would be, um, what's it called? What's it called when you give over property to? Willing it over or something?
Minute domain.
No, not a minute domain. I was like, they're taking it over.
It's the only thing that came to my mind.
Convey.
Convey?
Convey.
To the city? Okay. For that, for that property, for us to do that? Well, I mean, yeah. And like you said, that normally doesn't happen. But in this case, it's a, sounds like a transfer of, right, property. That's something that needs to happen.
Right.
Yeah. And to me, it's also a safety issue. Like I could only imagine how the cars are coming. And that because the lane narrows and then it gets wider, right?
Find it. Yeah. It kind of doesn't, it doesn't match up with Cole Thorpe either. So.
And we have a problem with that. I think sometimes in the city, streets not matching up. So I, um, with Councilman Hardjo, I also agree that this sounds like something I would support.
Councilman Brennan.
Yeah. Ms. Gonzalez, um, I, we definitely did get a really good in-depth memo from city staff here. It sounds like, one, I guess I didn't get a memo from you. You went to planning and zoning directly.
I did go to planning and zoning, yes.
And your, your initial request was that you'd do, uh, curb gutter sidewalk and we take care of the street.
Well, originally what, what happened was I'm trying to put, I'm tearing, I want to tear down the house that I'm currently living in. It's old. I've tried to remodel it. They said the fat, you know, I just need to tear it down. So that's what I'm doing. And I'm putting a manufactured home on the lot, pretty much in the same place that I'm currently, the house was currently at. They told me when I did that, because I was doing so much improvements on the property, that I would be required to put in the curb gutter, gutter and curb sidewalk, curb and gutter, and pave from the gutter to the middle of the road. I don't have that type of money. I mean, I was, I could do it, but it, why am I going to be doing that if the city? I mean, I know I have to maintain the sidewalk, but why should I have to do that? I'm not a contractor. I'm not, um, a developer. This is my property. I'm just replacing one home for another. So the planning and zoning said, no, she shouldn't have to do that. And so that's where Brenda and I started working together because, I mean, it, it, to put in the sidewalk curb and gutter, I was quoted 33,000. Um, Brenda got a quote, I think of 45,000. That takes up a lot of my loan. And then I'm paying on it for 30 years. I mean, just so I can put in a manufactured home and onto my property. I, I mean, I'm getting close to retirement age. I, I'm trying to keep my costs down.
Sure. So your, is your, is your request exactly what Brenda's writing us here? Or was this like a kind of a after the fact?
This was what Brenda and I had came up with. And I think she had talked to Hank also and gone over all this. If I don't have to pay, I mean, I don't want to pay for the sidewalk. I mean, that takes up a lot of my money.
And you didn't have any knowledge of that before, like coming to planning and zoning?
No, I, I, they told me when I called in to, to find out what I had to do to get, actually it's my contractor that came in and found out all that information. That I had to put in the sidewalk curb and gutter. And I, and I knew they told me that, but I mean, I didn't know what the cost was going to be. I mean, again, I'm not a developer. I'm not a contractor. I'm not building a new house. I'm just replacing the house for an existing house.
Right. I had some initial thoughts of, uh, you know, in the best interest of, of the city taxpayers here is, um, the, there's definitely been an issue found on Dogwood Circle with the road location. Is that right?
Mm-hmm.
What's that?
The final plaque and Dogwood.
Yeah. Um, on Bradford, there haven't been any identified issues. Is that right?
Right.
Okay. I was, I was thinking of, I won't even call it like a meet in the middle because I don't, I don't think it's there yet. But to, to go with, uh, Brenda's request of us, but, but to ask you to do the curb gutter and sidewalk only for the Bradford side, uh, since the road is fine, uh, just down from your house, it got redone later. And, uh, and then the city takes care of the curb gutter sidewalk and road on, on Dogwood Circle.
So are they also going to, am I going to be responsible to do the, um?
No.
The, the curb part where you have, where they, you know, the ADA part of it also?
The corner.
Yeah. Thank you.
Uh, I don't think so. I, I think that in my, in my mind, that would be the, the city's requirement for ADA coming around the corner. Just the, just the straight shot from just beyond the corner to the end of the property line.
I think that's, I have to see what the cost is. I'm sure it's not no 33,000 though.
Yeah, a lot less and, and, uh, no road improvement there either.
There's, yeah, okay.
Can I correct you real quick?
Sure.
She would be responsible for the ADA, says it right here. All sidewalks.
Well, I just, my thought was if, if the city's going to just take on the other port, then they'll keep going and taking on the, the corner of the ADA.
Yeah.
With the plan that they have in place here. It has to be done, but the city would do it.
Yeah. Cause I can't move ahead with anything until this is just resolved.
Right. But I mean, you can do it all, all in one plan.
Well, I can't move ahead with putting my, getting, getting my loan and any of that until this is resolved. The property, the sidewalk curb and gutter is all resolved.
Right. I think that Helen, they're going to make a decision tonight. They're just trying to figure out, you know, what portions and all that. Correct me if I'm wrong, counsel. So, um, the, the 90, what is it like? How many feet is that?
Yeah. I don't know what it is since they did the, since they did the survey. I think it was 97 before they did the survey.
So Chris, what do you think? Best estimation, just best guess. I'm not going to hold you to it. Eighty-five feet of.
So I was trying to figure out, mayor, um.
We did that over.
So it's about, it's almost exactly 85 feet. I was trying to break down the quote, so.
And while Chris is doing that, I just want to make the council aware that, um, I own property across the street, but it has no bearing on, on me. So if it, if there's a decision that is a tie, I could still make a decision.
Other than you rescued me from a dog by one time.
That dog was mean.
I know he was. Thank you for taking me home.
Yeah. How'd a pit bull get law, out?
So left math, it would be around $9,700 for her straight shot of sidewalk excluding the ADA. And that's just a swag, but it's pretty close.
And, um, Ms. Gonzalez, on that swag, that rant, wild guess. We also have a program that Chris has told me about that has, has money available, which is, um, kind of like a grant to our citizens. It's, it's called the 50-50 sidewalk grant match. So of that $9,500, it sounds like Chris, are you the approving authority on that? So he, he's already told me that he would approve half of that. So maybe $5,000.
Okay.
Roughly for you to do that section.
I would go with that.
And I think, I think that's fair to our citizens to ask you to do that because, um, granted, there's issues with the other side of your property. I get it. And that's our fault and I'm, I'm happy to take that on, but I don't see any problems with the Bradford side.
Right.
And I, that, that would be my request to pass this.
I, I can agree to that.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, counsel.
Mayor.
Councilwoman Garvey.
So just be taking the 71, 715 minus 5,000?
I don't know what math you're doing.
The, well, the sun rock and the etui concrete bids.
Hmm. Councilwoman Garvey.
Am I the correct?
The 50-50 funds on the sidewalk are in a different GL. Like we've, we've added this. Brenda and I have been working on Ms. Gonzalez's property for a little while. And so once I knew it was coming, we put money in streets specific to Ms. Gonzalez's property to fund out that sidewalk for the upcoming budget cycle.
So it's funded fully then without the 50-50?
Correct. Yeah. Anticipating that our estimate is right. I don't remember the number we put in at the bottom, Paula, but.
I just was wanting a dollar amount, not to exceed more.
Yeah. What I'm saying is if we allocate the funds specific to Ms. Gonzalez's property on the Dogwood side and then the Bradford side, it will, the 50% will come out of the budgeted street 50-50 line. So it'd be two different GLs. I guess what I'm trying to say, long story short, sorry.
Counselman Brennan.
And to, I don't know if it would make it easier for you. I suspect that it would, that we stick with all of our same numbers and have, if we, if, if the businesses etui that we hire, then they break down the cost for that section. And, and we do it all at once. And then you write a, whatever that 50% of that stretch is, you write the city a check for that.
Okay.
Anybody, everybody okay with that?
She would pay you etui direct.
Oh, etui.
Sorry.
Can we keep it on the same project though? Like?
Yes. Yeah. We could, we could do it exactly how you said, but she would pay the contractor directly. That's how we treat those.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do I need anything else or?
Only they got a vote.
Okay.
Mayor.
Sorry, I'm going to hurry.
Councilman Brennan.
I'd like to make the motion here to, uh, make it as easy as possible to honor the, uh, the memo written to city council on May 27th, 2025 by, um, staff member Brenda Ellis. Uh, with the, one exception that, uh, Ms. Gonzalez will pay 50% of the straight line sidewalk on Bradford Street. Uh, curb gutter and sidewalk. Starting right after the 88 corner.
Okay. Second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. I'll call for the question. Councilwoman Workla.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brennan.
Aye.
Councilwoman Garvey.
Aye.
Councilman Hardjo.
Aye.
All right.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Harold.
Thanks, Helen. Thanks, Helen.
I appreciate it.
Going to run down to new business, action item number three, deliberation decision regarding, uh, MHC six dash six dash 17 subsection D subsection seven with regards to qua, uh, qua, quantity of hens allowed on one parcel. I told the citizen, um, in, I'd asked the council if we could have more than six chickens. And so Ty has done some good stewardess for me. One, the lady uses them for food, but then, or sorry, the eggs for food. And then she also uses them for a, her autistic, um, child uses them obviously for the eggs as well. But it's like they're, like, it helps the sensory. So I told the, the, the nice lady, I would ask if you guys would, or would entertain that. And then Ty's got some like statistical data for us. Want to come up and talk on it?
Ty, don't foul it up.
I'm going to try hard not to. All right. Mayor, counsel, thank you. Uh, did some research, uh, going back about 10, 15 years. It is actually prohibited for anybody to possess chickens in the city limits. That was changed, uh, under Chief Schultz. They came up with a number of free hens. That was based off some formula. What took for a small family to feed them with eggs. Looking this morning on several, several different websites, the average now is four to six hens for a small household to feed them daily. It's like an egg a day from a hen.
Mayor.
Councilwoman Workla.
I want six hens. I do. I do. Um, it's funny. I was talking to Jeff Schroeder about this the other day and I was just like, you know, I come from the farm and, you know, right now I only have two and it's just not doing it. And he's like, you do live in the city, Jenny. I said, I know, but a lot of these people know about the farm, you know? And they, and they utilize the, the eggs. They trade with the eggs. They give them to their neighbors, right? That's what we do when we get too many eggs. I don't know. I, I, I think, I don't know if I'm sounding selfish here, but I think six is, um, a very good number to have within this, um, community.
Counselman Brennan.
A few questions. They're probably dumb questions. I'm sorry. Have there been any complaints on households in our city for chickens making noise or this, or smelling or anything that we know of?
I believe this one, there may have been a complaint from a neighbor on that.
From the citizen.
Talking to Danell, the one concern that she brought up was you start having more chickens. That could bring possible mites or bugs or stuff like that. So it's going to be up to the homeowner to make sure their pen or where they use to house these chickens, they're kept clean. Cause there could be a smell. The more animals you get, you're going to have that farm style quantity going on.
But do we have any way to control that? The stench of chickens?
Here.
Councilman Hardjo.
Councilman Brennan, we do have, uh, six dash six dash 12 animal nuisances that covers in subsection three, allowing the excessive accumulation. I should rephrase. It shall be unlawful for any owner or responsible party of an animal to allow it to become a nuisance to others by the following. And subsection three reads, allowing excessive accumulation of animal feces, which becomes offensive by sight or smell or creates an insect breeding or attraction site. So we do have a mechanism to police such a thing in our code already.
Are those the only ones that apply? Did you skip a bunch?
Uh, yes. That's, that one's three. There's excessive continuous barking, uh, charging at aggressive behavior, which would be funny if the chicken does happen. Impedes refuse collection by ripping any bag damages to the property of another. And it, and it does go on from there. But that one specifically kind of answers that portion of the question.
And then as far as, uh, again, I'm not a farm kid yet, but, uh, I hear the, I, I understand what it means, but open range chickens and all this stuff, um, going back to other ordinances we have, um, at large, does that? If Paul, if a chicken is running from yard to yard, is that?
Give it a plude, the coop. Sorry.
Is that an animal at large?
I'm having a real tough time being mature. It, it's animal at large, not dog at large. Technically animal at large would apply. If the chickens are.
Leaving their.
Leaving their yard.
And are, are there any requirements for, um, sorry. sorry, I, for the chickens to stay cooped up, or? I'm sorry, I'm not trying. Or, um, like, run free through their whole property? That, our ordinance doesn't specify that or anything?
I don't believe it does.
Is there any need to specify that?
Don't the, correct me if I'm wrong, don't the chickens eat the bugs in the ground?
Yeah.
Yeah, so you-
So, good.
Control them on their property.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Okay.
The homeowner, instead of your dog in your backyard, you have to control your chicken in your yard.
Yeah.
If your chicken goes into your neighbor's yard, now you have an out-large animal.
And, Mayor.
Councilwoman-
Yeah, and here's the other thing that, like, we do. Take that chicken manure, put in your compost, and then put it in your vegetable garden, right? Like, recycle up, right, recycle up or something, but anyway, I don't know. I, um, I think having chicken manure is actually better for your grass in your backyard. If you do let them run free, compared to dog manure, that could stink in the backyard, you know, due to not cleaning up after a dog. I'm about the six chickens, so. If I made that clear.
Councilwoman Brennan.
I'm sorry for causing a scene, I guess, but could I, could I s- I'd like to see the complaint that came in. We've only had one request for this that I know of. And the requester seems to have already received a complaint on their three chickens.
They had six.
They had six, and they got a complaint.
Yes.
When, how long ago was this?
Two weeks ago?
Yeah. Two weeks ago.
So, the complaint came in two weeks ago, and she's violating our city ordinance currently.
And they had to get rid of the three chickens.
Okay, so enforcement came in, whether, was it Danell or Anel?
Our staff.
Okay, went in and said, got a complaint, I see you have too many chickens, you have to downsize. And that, and that's, that's-
Issue got resolved.
That's why we're here today, really. But the complaint was because of smell or cleanliness?
I think it was the number.
Yeah, it was his number.
Chickens.
It was strictly just, my neighbor has too many chickens.
Yes.
Not a noise smell.
Yes, I believe so, yes.
Because most of those complaints are, are obviously complaint-driven. If the ma, the neighbors getting, like, frustrated with each other, then like, okay, I'm just continuing with your chickens now. Go ahead, Tiff.
We receive actually a lot of phone calls in City Hall with people who want to know that code specific and and want to know why three's the number. And then, we also on the flip side have them that, why don't we do waterfowl? Because people want duck eggs, right? Like, we end up filtering a lot of these questions, and we're like, three's the number. That's the magic number. Sorry, can't have anymore. And I would imagine there's a lot of people that have more than three.
A lot of people have more than three dogs.
All right, counsel, I, I brought it forward. What do you want to do? Councilman, uh, Brennan.
Since the issue's temporarily been addressed, although the complaint has not, the Requester has not been satisfied, I'd like to take a few, take two weeks to, to see the potential consequences, if any, not saying there will be, uh, of a decision before just rushing into it, because we didn't have any information coming in here other than a request.
Okay.
If, if everyone would so obliged, I'd appreciate it.
All right, counsel.
So, are we tableing that? Is that a motion?
Is that a motion?
I have to make, yeah. I'll make a motion to table this until our next regular meeting.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded to table. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. Councilman Harjo.
Aye.
Councilwoman Garvey.
Nay.
Councilwoman Workla.
Aye.
Councilman, uh, Brennan.
Aye.
All right, run down to final comments. Counsel.
Mayor.
Councilman, uh, Harjo.
If, if we happen to crack into, some code change in six dash six.
Paul said it's scrutiny. I could just change it.
You could just change it, okay. Just revert, nevermind.
You're non-venomous.
We're good. There's some, there's some nomenclature in six dash six where we used, where we used non-poisonous reptiles that should read non-venomous. We're good.
Okay. All right.
Mayor.
Councilman Harjo.
Now that we're creeping towards the final stages of, uh, pool construction, I would be lying if I didn't say I get about five questions a day on a status update. I know that when we toured, uh, a few weeks ago at the Chamber of Commerce, Tiff did a, an amazing job, you know, walking us through where we're at now. Not asking for a date by any means, just more of a, in terms of pool decking and that kind of thing, like, what do we have left to accomplish?
That's your baby, Tiff. Go ahead, take it.
Mayor, counsel, uh, pool decking would be this, uh, tenth street side that's left, um, and some of the grass. There's a power pole out in that grass area, a little wood, power pole service. Idaho Power probably be out early this week to remove that service off there and get the pole out of the decking, so we have that to do. Um, I know they're framing it up. Fencing's going in. We're supposed to do, a tour of the mechanical room and trainings this week, hopefully tomorrow, Thursday. The goal is, I'm going to say this, do not hold us to it, please. They're supposed to put water in it by the later part of this week. So, hopefully liner goes in smoothly and water droplets, not from the rain, will begin to go into it.
So, Tiff and I are going to do a video, a, a further update sometime this week.
Yeah, so, things are progressing really fast here. Um, that go on the exterior that was hard to find, they've wrapped that up. They've done the roll-up doors, they've done all the ramp approaches into the chemical rooms. So, yeah, things are fine-tuning and moving around quickly over there, so. There, you will see probably some, by the time they get the the concrete, that mirror, they'll bump up to the grass portion, that we're probably going to have to put up some orange fencing once we get the pool actually up in operation to keep people off the grass portion to bring that back, because it's sat without, and we have to fix some of that irrigation. But the park steps haven't been able to get on-site because of all the stuff, and at this point, it's kind of a touch-up at the end, so.
Councilwoman Workla.
Yeah, because I noticed driving by, there's a huge grass section that's, like, fenced in. Is that just going to be?
So, initially, when we started the project, we were going to put a, a fence all the way across to the street, right where the, the concrete would end, and that grass portion would open back up to the park as user space. Um, but we've since kind of chatted, while we have to rehab the grass back, it's best to keep people off of it. Um, and then, we're going to keep it in fence until we figure out what we're going to do with that building structure that once was the chemical room to the previous, uh, small pool. So, right now, it'll stay, um, until we kind of figure out programming or what, what the city would like to be looking for with the states.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Councilman, uh, Brennan.
On that note, I'd just like to say the staff's doing a great job, and it's, we're almost there. Push hard to the end. I'm excited to see that thing open. I know our kids are too. I'd like to address just a couple of the memos that were provided here real quick. For, uh, the mayor, uh, the Fiber Optics Department wants to get a new fiber hut. Am I understanding it right that, uh, the hut is being provided by CBH Homes, and it's the equipment on the inside that the city and is paying for? And that, in this location for Blue Yonder Development, is that where it's going to be placed at?
Chris.
It'll be in Blue Yonder, too.
In this, okay. And what, what area of the city will that service?
It's going to service everything that's in, oh, sorry, Mayor.
Yeah, I'll tell you.
Blue Yonder one, um, it's going to hit the Blue Yonder two, which is two phases, because there's North Family and the Single Family. Blue Yonder West when it comes, and then any new development out there. We have a development that's to the north of Blue Yonder, that's that autumn. And then, there's a couple of other applications, or early-stage applications that are south of the Passay, we need for Morning Dew subdivision as those start coming online.
Okay, and this has nothing to do with LID? Uh, this is strictly for essentially new development and those wishing to, not opt-in, but get into the system when they're able to. Right, okay.
So, those, um, bu, building permit fees that they've paid for, that's what they're paying that out of?
Okay. Okay, appreciate that, my mom. The, the trade-in of the backhoe is a fair number in your research? Something you would take personally if, if you owned it? It seems like a fair deal for a, almost a twenty-year-old machine.
It's had some significant issues with late.
Okay. I think that's probably a, a worthy purchase. Thank you. I'd like to, I'm trying to, like, just talk about these as they come in, and Paula, you wrote us a clarification memo just because of the title of something, but thank you for clarifying that. And then, um, I wanted to say, although I wasn't, uh, personally able to, uh, attend the Memorial Day, services, our, our cemetery looked fantastic with the new fence and the flag holders that are kind of built in or attached, uh, to the fence. It looked, uh, clean and sharp, so, good job to everyone involved in that. Thank you.
All right, meeting adjourned. Yeah, the American Legion, they loved it.
Why are the chickens happy?
It has to look better.